Good evening and welcome to the June 22nd, 2023 meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteer Bloomington residents appointed by the city council. Today we have four, which is a quorum. The commission advises the city council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning and transportation issues. Our work is informed by the city's comprehensive plan, various district plans, and the city code. For some items, the commission makes a recommendation with the city council having final decision-making authority. In other cases, the Planning Commission can approve or deny an application subject to an appeal to the city council. For each action item, there will be a staff report, an opportunity for the applicant to present, then time for any member of the public to provide testimony. Our first order of business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with information on remote testimony.
Yes, Chair Roman, commissioners, we have three public hearings this evening, and just as you can testify here in person in the chambers, if you're watching from home, you can also testify remotely. To do that, what you would do is call the number on the screen and enter in the access code, and then we'll be able to patch you through to testify. We will have this number shown periodically throughout the public hearing items on the screen.
Thank you. As the planning manager mentioned, we have a full agenda, three public hearings and three study items. The first item is a request for a conditional use permit for outdoor seating at a restaurant, and Planning Tech Hespec has the presentation on this item.
Hello. Yeah, so this item is a conditional use permit for outdoor seating at Eton Ramen, which is located at 2137 West Eightieth and a Half Street. As you may remember, this was continued from the last meeting because we received an email with concerns from one of the two property owners. In the past two weeks, the applicant and that property owner came to an agreement, and tonight there's a revised application in front of you. This aerial shows the proposed site outlined in red. The subject property is Zoned C5, which is freeway mixed use with the planned development overlay, and it is designated regional commercial in the comprehensive plan. There are retail uses to the north and east and multifamily housing to the south and west. Here you can see the site plan with the tables in red. So the applicant is proposing three tables and 12 seats outside of their restaurant. The outdoor seating is a conditional limited use, while restaurants themselves are just a limited use. So the maximum limited uses allowed for the building is 25% of the total floor area, and the current limited uses together fall at approximately 5.7% of the total floor area. This picture shows the outside of the building, kind of where the seating will be located. You can see that the wider-than-usual sidewalk allows the proposed seating to still maintain the required five-foot clearance for the sidewalk and door. The seating is located under the roof, which should provide noise abatement. The landscaping does need to be maintained, as shown on the approved landscaping plan. Therefore, the tenant needs to replace landscaping adjacent to their tenant space, which would be two trees. The trees and then also the building posts will help provide vehicle barriers. Parking for the area is based on the Penn American mixed-use development. Staff has no concerns with parking, as the preliminary development plan review for parking required restaurant seating not to exceed 165 seats for Phase 1, and the two restaurants in Phase 1 only have a total of 131 seats, including the proposed outdoor seating. So with that, staff was able to make the required findings and recommends approval through the following motion on the screen.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Nope. Okay, thank you for that. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
I think they might be online, potentially.
All right. Do you know which name?
I'm not sure.
Might be the call-in user?
It would...
Yeah, call-in user with the phone number starting in 714. I will unmute you now. Just want to check to see if you're...
No, that's not me. I'm pertaining to the massage and the shopping center.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, perhaps he's not here.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this conditional use permit application? Is there anyone else online who we don't recognize?
Yes, Chair Roman, we do have the caller we just talked to, and then one other name. I'm not sure, so let's check in with that. Joseph Reeve, I will unmute you now. Joseph Reeve, are you interested in speaking on this item?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one in the chamber and no one remotely, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Discussion on the proposal? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's pretty straightforward. Seems like a lot of thought has gone into it. I appreciate the kind of pause that we took at our last meeting, and it seems like this is good to go. I'm in full support.
Yes, Commissioner Cookden.
Mr. Chair, I'm also in support. I appreciate the building owner and the tenant working this out and bringing an application that everybody's happy with before us, and I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please.
In case PL 2023-63, having been able to make the required findings, I move to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for a restaurant with outdoor seating at 2137 West Eightieth One Half Street, Unit D, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of a conditional use permit. Is there... Actually, that is a... To approve a conditional use permit at the subject property. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. This is a final decision unless an appeal is received by 4:30 PM on June 27th. Thank you. The second item is a request for a variance to reduce a setback on a corner lot, and Planner Rick Byle has this presentation.
Let me just share my screen. Okay, thank you. Hi, we are here for Planning Case 2023-64, which is a variance to reduce a front yard setback along West 81st Street from 30 feet to 18.9 feet, and it is for a new single-family dwelling. So the proposal that we have here is, this proposal was initiated when Mr. Valentin Romero, who's in our audience this evening, expressed interest in a project which would demolish the current single-family home that is on the site of his property. Mr. Romero's plan is to demolish the house and construct, which was constructed in 1947, and replace it with a two-story house that effectively matches the same floor print of the house that it is replacing. The location of the house is at the corner of West 81st Street and Wentworth Avenue South, and it is residentially zoned and used, and it abuts properties to the southeast and west that are residentially zoned and used. Industrial properties abut the property to the north side, and somewhat unusually, there is an alley access on the east side of the property. This is a screen capture of the as-built survey. A few things to point out. The current setback on the north side of the house, of the existing house, is 9.7 feet. There is a rear 24-foot setback, and there's no garage. So a 30-foot wide house cannot fit onto a 59-foot wide lot to include both a 30-foot setback and a 10-foot wide setback. The proposed building would move the property 30 feet from the west setback to meet that requirement. It would also meet the requirement to the south, which requires a 10-foot setback, and then it also adds a garage, which is fixing a nonconformity that currently exists. And it improves on the nonconformity which exists on the north side of the property. With this, there are recommended conditions, which are very standard for residential building developments. Of note is number four, which recognized that there is an unknown well, and so that there must be a... There must be sealed prior to demolition by a contracted or contracted licensed well contractor, and that the reduced setback must be as shown or greater than shown on the approved plan in the file. Staff does recommend your recommendation for approval for the reduced front yard setback along West 81st Street, as it is shown.
Thank you. Questions for staff regarding this item? Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
If these the applicant, I think that would, if we know who it is, that's okay. Yeah. Anything you'd like the commission to know about your application? The floor is yours.
Well, I just want to get this project approved, because we like to do like a regular-sized house, because the setbacks we have is going to be like a really small line on the house, like a skinny house. So it's gonna, we try to get approved this. I don't know if it's gonna be like a big deal for the city to let us get the line. That's all I can say.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. This item is a public hearing. Is there anyone, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the chamber who would like to speak on this item? No? Anyone online?
Chair Roman, there are the two names I didn't recognize from last time. I will check with them on Chair Roman. There were the two names we didn't recognize from last time. We will check in with both of them. I'll start with call-in user with the number starting 714. I will unmute you now. Are you interested in speaking to this item?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. And Joseph Reeve, I will unmute you now, and see if you're interested in speaking on this item.
No, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Nobody in the chamber, nobody remotely. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Discussion on this item? Commissioner Abdi, did you?
Thank you, Chair. I was just gonna say that this, I'm indeed in support of the application. I think the staff reported a really good analysis of the conditions of the site, especially about the district lot size requirement that for the area, for the district, it is about 1,100 square foot required lot size, but this is about 7,500 square foot lots. It is already a substandard lot. It's a corner lot, so I think, like the applicant said, it would be impossible to build a decent-sized home using the required setback. So I'm indeed, I think there is a hardship for the site, for the applicant to build on the site, so I'm in support of the application.
Yeah, I will, I'm trying to think. In the five years that I've been on the commission, we've had very few requests for variances, and I can remember none that we have approved. And mostly, it's been because they have been for the convenience of somebody or something that wasn't really a deal breaker if they didn't get it. It was just, would have been nice to have. In this situation, you've got a lot that's constrained by its size, but then it's doubly constrained by it being a corner. And I'm sensitive to the corner aspect, and I also acknowledge that even at the reduced setback, it would still be consistent with the neighboring homes. So visually, it would be consistent. So for those reasons, I can support the staff's recommendation. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add one thing. I'm also in support, and I just appreciate that this is a nonconformity improvement. I think that's really important, that we are looking to find those nonconformities and making the improvements, so that we are able to address properties consistently over a period of time. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion or entertain a motion on this item? Commissioner Albrecht.
In case PL 2023-64, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend approval of a variance to reduce the front yard setback along West 81st Street from 30 feet to 18.9 feet for a new single-family dwelling at 8101 Wentworth Avenue South, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to recommend the subject variance to the city council. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. This item will appear on the July 10th city council agenda as a consent item. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
The third item is another public hearing. This is for a comp plan amendment. There's several things going on here, so give me a moment to consult my cheat sheet. There is a comp plan amendment, a rezoning, and preliminary and final development plans for residential development in the Penn American District, and Planner Centenario has this item.
Mr. Chair, I would like to abstain from this item to avoid a conflict of interest.
Thank you. You may excuse yourself. For the point of order for those participating or watching, we do have a quorum tonight. A elective recusal does not change that, so we do still have a quorum, and we may proceed on this item. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Roman. So item three on your agenda tonight, a variety of entitlements that the applicant is seeking, but as you mentioned, it includes a comprehensive plan amendment, more specifically changing the future land use guide plan. Currently, the site, as you'll see, is a commercial-oriented, and the applications for residential development. So the amendment would be to re-guide the site to a high-density residential. Along with that is a rezoning to a high-density residential zoning district, and then preliminary final development plans for a 99-unit, four-story apartment building. So we are in the Penn American District, so this is a very prominent site, Knox and American, and even more so because along Knox is the Orange Line BRT stop. So very well-served by transit, very prominent, visible site, and that came into play as staff did our review to try and ensure that there was an urban character that's consistent with the district plan. I have a few images of existing conditions. So this is on the northwest corner of the site, looking southeast. You can see the district in the background. That's a recently-completed four-story apartment building. The applicant was part of that development team. And essentially, you see the vacant site, as it is today. It used to be a bank, a drive-through bank. We did have a proposal for a drive-through restaurant several years back. That didn't materialize, and we have an application today for a high-density residential development. Here's another image. Again, the district is in the background. The Orange Line BRT is to the left of the screen, and you can see there's a couple feet of grade change between the sidewalk and the site. That grade change would remain, and I think that's a relevant point as we discuss building enclosure and landscaping. Yet another image. This is from the corner of the district, looking northwest. So again, you're looking north at the Orange Line BRT, and then the Eightieth and Half Street, which is a private road, but nonetheless is a priority in terms of having a building frame the street, Eightieth and Half Street. It's in that the plan dictates that Eightieth and Half and Knox are priorities from an urban design perspective versus American Boulevard. So the re-guiding, pretty self-explanatory. It's currently guided community commercial, and so it's a commercial-oriented guide plan designation, but this is a 100% residential development, and so it doesn't need to be re-guided to high-density residential, because the site really stands alone relative to the other phases of the Penn American redevelopment areas. And along with that would be our first RM100. We do not have a property in Bloomington, Glenn, unless you're mistaken. This site falls within the density ranges of RM100, 50 to 100 dwelling units per acre. This development is 55, and so it is appropriate to propose the RM100 zoning district, and this is a planned development. So the planned development overlay would be applied to the entire site. So going on to the site plan, to orient viewers, American Boulevard West is along the north. We have Eightieth and a Half to the south, and then Knox Avenue to the east. And again, the Orange Line BRT station is along Knox Avenue immediately east of the building, and what is the ramp down to the structure parking. And so again, looking at the district plan, really wanted to encourage a building that was closer to Eightieth and a Half and Knox Avenue to try and frame those streets and provide a more pedestrian-friendly environment than what's there today. Walking along a vacant lot really isn't the most comfortable environment. And for the most part, the application is a very straightforward application from a code perspective. The application is compliant with the vast majority of standards that we have, including some of the incentives through the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. So I think I didn't mention on the previous slide, but this development would include nine units, affordable at a 50% AMI income, so it exceeds the minimum requirement. But there's really only one small thing that we just didn't agree with the applicant, and that is related to a parking lot landscape yard, and that's along American Boulevard West. And so the code standard is 20 feet, and very few landscape yards in this area have a 20-foot setback, so there are definitely some existing conditions that aren't code-complying. And the applicant is proposing a six-foot, as you can see on the image. So the area that I have highlighted is the landscape yard that, you know, we're just disagreeing on, where a six-foot is proposed, and the code requirement is 20. So staff is, our recommendation is that at least a 10-foot landscape yard be incorporated into the plan. And I'll show a couple images, but generally speaking, you know, we're not aware of a scenario where we are supportive of that much of a deviation for landscape yard, and we want to ensure that there's a sufficient landscape buffer between the sidewalk and the parking. But the applicant has made a good point, that this is really consistent with what's already in the district. So just kind of zooming in a little bit on that area, the setback from the property line is six feet. The boulevard between the back of the curb to the sidewalk is nine feet. Now just keep that in the back of your head. Right across the way, looking towards Red Lobster, it's even a smaller landscape yard. And so this is, these are the existing conditions. The boulevard between the back of the curb and the sidewalk is only seven feet, and the landscape yard is less than five feet. So it's even, it's even smaller than what the applicant is proposing. And it's understandable that the applicant wanted the parking to be more or less in line with what's already there across the way. So it's a perfectly understandable request. Just as staff, we're not supportive of that. We think there should be a little more of a landscape buffer along American Boulevard West. So going to the landscape plan generally, one thing that the applicant did propose in response to our concern about landscape buffers, it's not shown on this plan, but a different graphic shows a fence, like a small three-foot fence, to provide a little bit more of a visual buffer between the sidewalk and the parking lot. That could certainly help. Again, that's not something that the staff would prefer, but it is something that the applicant is considering. But overall, the landscaping plan meets the quantity standard for landscaping. I'll have another graphic. There's a lot of low-line landscaping along Knox Avenue where the BRT station is located, so there would be a more pleasant environment, you know, actual landscaping instead of just weeds. And that's what you see here. So this is one of the renderings on the right. Real life never looks as good as the renderings, where things are big and lush and green, but nonetheless, it gives you a flavor for what this would look like, you know, how the building would relate to the sidewalk and how it would relate to the BRT station. And it looks, in our opinion, it looks really good. So you see that the landscaping would provide a little bit of a landscape buffer, and then you have the building. So it's much, much greater of enclosure compared to what's there today, which is nothing. Couple more images. On the top is the south elevation along Eightieth and Half Street. So again, you're seeing a building that's pushed closer to the street. There's already pedestrian lighting and sidewalk on-site where there's the angled parking. But again, this is much more urban in character, which is consistent with the Penn American District Plan. And the lower image is a little broader view of Knox Avenue, where you see the building as it relates to Knox Avenue. Two more building elevations that were included in the materials. The top is, well, they're both, they're both north building elevations, just different vantage points. But as you can see, there's a pedestrian connection, more or less in the center of the site, between American Boulevard and the building itself. So that's something we require, and it is included in the application, but we think it's well-located. And with that, we are recommending approval. Again, I would note that one discrepancy in terms of the landscape yard that we can discuss, that is a recommended condition of approval, that a minimum of 10-foot landscape yard is included, or the plan is modified to incorporate that. But otherwise, staff is supportive of the application, and the recommended motions are before you.
Thank you for that. Questions for staff on this item? Commissioner Abdi?
Thank you. I am still trying to put together the
Thank you, I'm still trying to put together the sentences, so here, bear with me for a little bit. I guess the question, the main theme I have trying to visualize is, I thought, American Boulevard, are there potential for more community commercially-guided properties on American Boulevard that could be fully rezoned or amended to just do residential development? I thought, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, are we, are there potential for other sites to be rezoned for allowing more residential on the corridor instead of supporting applications that are like mixed-use, for example, that allow commercial? And I don't know how walkable this area is for me to like suggest, you know, focusing more on mixed-use property development on this site, but I don't know if you understood the question here, but is it a good idea to just do a commercial corridor, predominantly commercial corridor, to just do development? That's just not allowing commercial use on the site?
Understood. Chair Roman, Commissioner Abdi. I think I understand the comments, but I guess my response would be, I think all we have to do is look north of American Boulevard and see tremendous potential for redevelopment in a variety of sectors, whether that's 100% commercial development, 100% residential, and mixed. So, there, in terms of land availability, I do not believe that's an issue to support a variety of different types of development types. But we do think that for this site in particular, having a 99-unit apartment building right along a transit line is an appropriate phase of development in this area. And so, we are supportive of the comp plan change. Moving forward, our hope is that South Town will have phased redevelopment of its own. We can help work through what that would look like.
Just a quick follow-up, in terms of like the, does the city of Bloomington support, whether it's commercial or residential, like moving closer to the buildings? Is that something that I think was discussed briefly about the Lindell? And I think we might get into that, but the Lindell District area, like having more commercial on the street level, or like properties built closer to the street, and maybe having parking in the back? Was there any discussions about whether moving parking to the back? Or is it because this property is residential, it was more convenient, safer, better, whatever the term may be, to have parking more in the front then? I would expect, I see some of those types of development more in Minneapolis, where, you know, it's encouraged more to always have buildings right on the property line on the street side, than, and then allow parking in the back or incorporate it into the development? There is ample land here, but was there any discussion to encourage parking in the back and having front-facing property and parking?
Sure. Chair Roman, Commissioner Abdi. You know, using the guidance in the district plan, that's kind of what we did. Eighteenth and a Half is really a priority in terms of having buildings closer to the street. And so, staff, in our discussions with the applicant, prioritize pushing the building closer to Knox and Eighteenth and a Half. American Boulevard is really tertiary in its hierarchy of importance, given that, you know, there is a lot of surface parking along American Boulevard in the city of Bloomington. And Eighteenth and a Half is unique, is that it's intended to be more pedestrian-oriented, with angled parking, wider sidewalks, pedestrian lighting, landscaping. And our preference would have been for a more like L-shaped building, as I identify in the staff report, so that Knox Avenue had more of a building enclosure, and then parking would be kind of behind the L, if you will. But, you know, I think given the priorities of the district plan, and just the need for some surface parking to make the project work, the surface parking inevitably was going to be along American Boulevard.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. My question is about parking specifically. What is the parking ratio of the building? And I may have missed it, but is there underground parking?
There is, Chair Roman, Commissioner Albrecht. I can show you the floor plan if you'd like to see what that'll look like, but yes, I'm sorry, there is one level of structured parking, 50 stalls. And so, that does meet the code requirement, once the Opportunity Housing Ordinance incentive is taken in consideration, where they are allowed a reduction. And with that, the requirement is 50 stalls, so they're meeting that requirement. But yeah, there is one level of structured parking. There are water table issues with this site, so having two levels of structured parking, for example, would have been cost prohibitive, because essentially it would have to go up. And structured parking is very expensive, and so that it probably wouldn't have allowed this project to move forward. But in terms of the ratio of parking, you know, I don't know, I could try to do some math in my head, but I would fail. But what I can say is that it's actually, you know, once we have the, once we take the OHO incentive and apply it, this site actually exceeds the minimum by a fair amount, by 21 stalls, which is pretty rare, we typically don't see that. We're usually reviewing requests to go beyond what the OHO incentive is. And so, that's a little unique, in that there are stalls to lose, if you will.
Just as a follow-up to that, the district, are they, I wonder anecdotally, are you hearing from them that they feel like they are, they have enough parking for that site? Or is there enough overflow that those slanted parking spots are taking up all the time?
Sure. Chair Roman, Commissioner, anecdotally, I haven't heard one way or another about the district. You know, visiting this morning, as I was taking pictures, the vast majority of the north side of Eighteenth and a Half was vacant, and they had a car or two here and there, which I think is the intent, is that those stalls on the north side of that street were intended to be delegated for this phase of development. As you can see in the aerial image here, it does get used, certainly. But I think overall, I don't know, Glenn, if you've heard more about it, but I believe that there's sufficient parking to serve the needs of the district.
Question I just should have thought of ahead of him, and it may be more of a question for our colleagues in engineering. Perpendicular parking takes a certain length. Angled parking, I assume, is less length? Is that accurate, or is that not accurate?
Chair Roman, you're testing my ITE knowledge. I'm afraid I don't recall the exact dimensions, but generally speaking, you really don't save space with angled parking.
And again, the reason I was asking, oh, we're not in the discussion phase, but kind of the question of would the angled parking, given that it's overparked, and we have lots of issues with overparking in the city, and we're next to a major arterial bus line, would the angled parking potentially be a way to achieve that additional yard, front yard, if you will?
Chair Roman, I don't think so. And the reason I don't is the stalls that are identified in that area, they're already compact. They're already compact dimensions, so 16 feet in depth. I really don't think there would be any space savings by doing angled.
Okay. Other questions for staff? Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Good evening, my name's Ryan Dunley. I work with Stewart Development Corporation. We are a developer and own and manage apartments throughout the Twin Cities. We've been working in the Penn American District since 2007. We first did Genesee, and then most recently, and co-developed the grocery store and retail there, and then moved on to the district back in 2018, 19? And so, this site was left, and so, we worked hard with staff to try to tweak it to where we could bring a plan tonight that kind of fit the district plan and zoning. And I thank planning and staff for their time on that. As far as the parking goes, I know that we discussed kind of a little bit about the the design reasons why we wanted it, and the linear parking and the existing. But I also want to talk about just the demand. We've been in this area, and we know, we know our buildings and what we need to park. And it's rare, he's right, that I don't come in here and say, can I have a reduction in parking? That's typically a way to save some money. But with this project in this area, and the adding of the Orange Line, we feel that these, what would, you know, 21 stalls that we're talking about within the surface parking lot are necessary for this project. The 23 stalls along Eighteenth and a Half right now could potentially, once the Orange Line is at full capacity, some of those stalls could be taken during the day for people that ride, you know, park and ride. It's not supposed to be that, but it's tough to police. And so, we don't want to be in a position where, just because we are, and we're providing pretty much per-code parking on this plan here, and we're just not taking the surface park reduction that comes with the opportunity housing. So, we feel what we're asking for is what we need. Because we don't, the last thing we want to do is have something that isn't happening now later affect not only this project, but the district and Red Lobster. And so, it's a little bit preventative, but yet, we feel that we have the need for this parking, for just this development alone. So, I might be back some other day asking for a reduction in parking, but this one, building to code makes sense for us as operators, and I think it benefits our project here and the Penn American District as a whole. Being short is not something that we want to end up with, and for our residents to have to deal with and drive around and look for parking either. So, that's kind of the basis behind that. We brought together the same kind of team and architect for this project. We've worked with the SGE since 2008 on the three projects to form some consistency throughout the district. And I think they did a great job with what we have planned here. And again, thanks for your consideration tonight. And we've got our team available on, on, looks like most of them are on the phone as well, and then Neil's here to talk about any specifics in the design. But we like the area, we've been here, the office near here, and the walkability that you talked about. We've spent in each project with the wide sidewalks and getting some retail down at the other end. And so, we've set this up to do what the original plan is, and people, it's been well-received. I mean, people like the area and the project so far. So, to bring another 99 units with some affordability, we're looking forward to do that.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Abdi.
Just a, probably has nothing to do with the specific applications before us, but for the image before us right now lists the affordability units. Since we're talking about parking, are the units, are you charging for parking for the development, or is that?
So, we've got the 52 stalls below, and market, depending on market, I mean, this is two years away from probably, you know, once you get approvals and to build it. So, at the district, we do charge for parking, I think it's $75. Market has, in recent years, has gone to charging for parking, even out in the suburbs a little more. It was concentrated downtown, but you're seeing it on most new developments where there is a fee. So, yeah, there'll be a charge, I don't know the amount yet, for the 52 stalls, but doesn't mean you have to take them, because we'll have surface cars enough to handle that as well.
It's not so much a question as a comment, but I would encourage you to monitor the parking situation if it means that you need to eventually install some, you know, card-keyed gates or something, because the hide-and-ride is what is a thing. And given that we intend for people to be park and ride on the other side of the freeway, and so, given that you are the primary landlord in this area, I would monitor that, because I think it is important for the residents to have, or in their guests. And if that means that we, you know, the city needs to be asked at some point to examine if the Eighteenth and a Half street parking becomes so, which is a thing that has to be time-limited, I don't know what the answers are, and it may not be a problem anytime soon. But my only recommendation, as long as we've got you, is just to encourage you to keep an eye on that, because hide-and-ride is a thing.
I was, I was aware of that once, so in our REOA agreement that we did with the HRA and the neighbors, we do have a clause in there for the hide-and-ride, and it's just tough to police. But we can sign it, we haven't done that yet, because we haven't seen an issue. But again, I don't think the Orange Line is up to its full capacity right now, so. And when I say forward-thinking, you know, I don't know what Red Lobster is one day, I don't know how many riders are going to be on there. So, that's kind of why I'm pushing for these 15 stalls, just to, just to.
And like I said, someday that may involve, you know, again, a gate at your lot that your residents card in. I don't know what that looks like, but just, while we're here, we can give it advice.
Well noted, thank you.
Other questions for, yes, Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. My question is related back to the staff report, moving from a setback of six feet to 20, or from 20 feet to six feet, excuse me, and then back to 10 feet. I'm curious what you have, you've obviously been aware of the condition, and what does that mean for the project?
Well, that's what we're talking, the 15 stalls in that corner, where the, that's what we're talking about. I think by putting that buffer in, I think we lose those stalls. And that's where we're not only in the design and the alignment, but the need is what I'm trying to keep through some encroachment agreement or something. If you look all the way down American Boulevard on both sides, that, like you mentioned, that buffer isn't really there on any of the developments. And as close as Red Lobster, all we're doing is just lining up the other side of that private drive. So, visually, it appears to work, and I get that, you know, they'd like to see this buffer, but in this instance, we're asking for an encroachment agreement just to get that parked again, and not do the buffer, and have it line up.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You bet, thanks.
This item is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Anyone in the chamber who would like to speak on this item? Anyone online?
Chair Roman, let's check with two callers. Caller with starting the digits 714, I will unmute you now. Are you interested in speaking on this item?
Yeah, I mean, and there are just more questions, and I apologize. I'm really unfamiliar with this process as a whole, and I believe the gentleman answered my question. But, you know, what stage are we in? Has this been approved? And if so, how long will it take for building to actually start? Was that the two years that he quoted?
So, first, actually, if I could step back a second, if I ask you to identify yourself for the record?
Oh, Michael Gonzalez, we're a tenant inside the property. We own the massage and the on-location there.
I want to clarify if we have the right location. You mean adjacent or nearby here?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, because as I say, the location now is an empty lot, so I wanted to confirm. Generally, we, it's not a question and answer, but as long as we got you, we heard that the applicant expects the project to be finished construction in approximately two years.
Okay, great.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, Chair Roman, yeah, you know, that we're, in terms of the timeline of the total process, you know, they've applied, we're in a public hearing right now before planning commission. There's still another meeting with city council, they're the ultimate decision-maker. So, just for the benefit of the caller, there's still some public process yet to be had. Then, there's usually a period where they, they're doing financing, they're doing number crunching, and so, you know, we'd look to the applicant, best case, when they would start construction, but, you know, it may not be for a year, or until next spring, you know, until they actually start physical construction of the project.
Did you have any other comments on this item?
Nope, thank you.
All right.
Yes, Joseph Reeve, I will unmute you now to see if you have any comments on this item.
Nothing to add, thanks.
Have we exhausted our list?
We have.
All right. Having heard public testimony, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, a motion of the second to close the public hearing discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, public hearing is closed. Discussion on the item and the series of recommendations. Commissioner Abdi.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have really much to add in support of the application as proposed, and I'm ready to move whenever we're ready.
I think the, it seems like a good project, you know, it might have been nice to have some retail on this end, but I also know that the retail on the other end is busy, but not, you know, not as busy. I mean, there's the area in the middle will eventually redevelop over time, and that may fill in there. We don't have any retail on the south side of Eighteenth and a Half, so it's not inconsistent with what's there already. And having been on the commission, when we saw a different proposal for this site, which I remember was quite the discussion, this is a significant. which I remember was quite the discussion, this is a significant improvement. So, um, I am in support of these items. Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Chair. I am struggling with this 10-foot setback and primarily because I don't know where the 10 feet is coming from. It seems like it's a little out of nowhere, um, given that six is conforms with the, uh, Red Lobster lot and 20 is code. So personally, uh, I think that it should be either six or 20, maybe sent in finer century or something else.
Chair Roman, Commissioner Albrecht, there's no magic behind the 10-foot number. It's something that we have seen to be, at least in our, from our perspective, uh, sufficient enough of a buffer to support, uh, landscaping over a long period of time. Whereas the, the narrower it gets, the more, the higher the likelihood that landscaping struggles, especially along public streets where there's salt, snow, uh, just gets beat up. And so having a little bit more of a buffer, I think gives the plantings, uh, more chance of success. Uh, but whether it's 10 feet, 11 feet, nine feet, uh, you know, it, there's no magic behind that number.
Chair Roman, Commissioner Albrecht, one thing to point out too on that, uh, matter is that even at 10 feet, you still could have parallel parking stalls. Could no longer have, uh, 90-degree stalls, but parallel stalls would be possible. So the number of stalls would go down, but, um, it wouldn't go from 15 to zero.
I'd forgotten that that was one of the items that was in the, in the report. Uh, I, I guess I'm in alignment with what you're talking about, Commissioner Albrecht, is six or 20, if you will. Um, because I'd, you know, although someday the Red Lobster will redevelop, we don't know if that will be in a year or 20 years. Um, and it does, from the photos we saw, it does appear that the right kind of vegetation can do well. Um, so, uh, but as we heard at the other end of the property, we have vegetation that has not, uh, trees that we have to, the other applicant has to replace, which raises a separate item that I'll bring up later about how we do or don't follow up over time on landscape requirements in commercial areas. But, um, I guess I don't have a problem with the proposed, that, what the applicant is proposing, given what's adjacent and given that the far end of the lot has a significant amount of, of frontage. Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Chair. I, I, I also am kind of swayed towards the six feet only, um, I would feel differently if the building was on the north end of the site, um, because I do think that that vegetation buffer is important. Uh, but with parking, less so, particularly because it is commercial across the street and also surface park, parking across the street. Um, so I'm either, my suggestion and my thought was either we decide to do six feet or we decide to do 20 feet and go with what the code says.
Do you have a leaning?
I have a leaning towards six feet.
Okay. I, I could be leaned that way as well. Commissioner Abdi, do you have any thoughts or?
I don't have thought, it's just I think the more you spoke, I, I don't know if I'm getting, we're thinking this, but we're talking about that American Boulevard side, right?
And just the first half of it, that little strip.
Right, the yellow side.
Yep.
I thought the, uh, Mrs. Centenaro was saying that the six foot is consistent with existing sidewalks on the other side. So for me, I was cool with that. I, the district might require 20 feet, but I think with the, how it's shown, if you require 20 foot, it just look off considering the shape of the lot as well too. So I was fine with six feet unless.
Yeah, Chair Roman, Commissioner Abdi, yeah, the right across the private drive, the entranceway, the, at the Red Lobster, it's just slightly narrower than what the applicant is proposing before you. Uh, just for, to make sure we're very clear on, um, if and when you make a motion, uh, for the last motion related to the preliminary final development plans, uh, if that's the, if that's the way you are swayed, uh, just to make sure we're clear on what the recommendation is, if you want to just accept what the applicant is proposing, I would encourage you to strike recommended condition number four.
Right.
So we're clear on what the recommendation is.
That would be for the third motion, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. So, uh, further discussion or if anyone would like to start a series of motions? Commissioner Albrecht?
I have one more comment. Thank you, Chair. I have one more comment to make. I do appreciate that staff is looking at increasing the vegetation on the site. I do think that it is important. So I don't, I won't, don't want to negate the fact that 10 feet, I understand the goal of 10 feet. Um, I just think that, and we talk about this a lot, is it's either code or it's a variance and seems like this, it, it works, uh, at six feet. And so that's the way that, um, I think we should move. So I am happy to make a motion.
Sure.
In case PL 2023-68, I move to recommend the city council adopt a resolution approving a comprehensive land use guide plan amendment to re-guide 1801 and 1851 American Boulevard West from community commercial to high density residential.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to recommend a comp plan regiding. Any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes?
In case PL 2023-68, I move to recommend the city council adopt an ordinance rezoning 1801 American Boulevard West from C5 PD freeway mixed use plan development and 1851 American Boulevard West from C5 freeway mixed use to RM 100 PD high density residential plan development.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to recommend rezoning. Further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes? Sure.
In case PL 2023-68, I move to recommend the city council approve preliminary and final development plans for a four-story 99-unit apartment building located at 1801 and 1851 American Boulevard West, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report, striking condition four.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to recommend preliminary and final development plans at the subject property. Further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. These items will be a public hearing on the July 24th city council meeting. Thank you for the good work on that.
Thank you.
All right. The fourth item is to discuss a study item, to discuss potential rezonings in the Lyndale Avenue retrofit plan area. Um, the hits keep coming. We've got planner Ramon Olson. We might get everybody here tonight. The floor is yours. Thank you, Chair Roman.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, members of the planning commission, uh, item number four is a study, a study item examining, uh, set of, uh, properties that are proposed to be rezoned, uh, within, uh, the node areas of, uh, Lyndale Avenue. And the node areas are referring to the Lyndale suburban, uh, Lyndale Avenue suburban retrofit plan. I'll get to that in a moment. Um, yeah, so it's a total of 28 parcels, um, under consideration and the intersections are 86th, uh, Street and 98th Street. Here's a, a couple of maps looking at both areas under, uh, being considered. Um, the, and we had to split those up into two because there's quite a bit of distance between the two, but they're both within those areas, uh, defined in that retrofit plan. And if you recall, the rent, uh, the retrofit plan was approved, uh, in 2021 in April. Um, the guiding principles were to create a, uh, compact, critical mass of housing, jobs and services within those node areas that I talked about. And you can actually see those node areas illustrated on the right image. They're within that thick red border, within the dotted line, um, those areas, uh, defined by dotted lines, those are the, the areas, uh, under consideration. And I, and underlined housing, because that's a big part of this proposal is to encourage more housing development within those node areas. Cause the plan recognizes that B2 as a zoning district is inconsistent with the vision of the retrofit plan because it removes that option of adding housing. And it also encourages, uh, more auto-oriented uses where that's not the desired vision for Lyndale Avenue. So, uh, B4 does, uh, support that more walkable urban design, um, uh, described in the suburban retrofit plan, or I'm sorry, I'll just refer to it as the retrofit plan. It also supports mixed use of dense housing. These are all, um, critical components of a walkable urban area that, um, that is, as described in that retrofit plan. Um, also, uh, you know, further supporting this, this proposal are a couple of, uh, actions that took place prior to the retrofit plan in 2019. Uh, the city adopted the 98th Street Station Area Plan and also the comprehensive plan. They both envisioned more transit supportive development, mixed uses, higher densities, again reflecting what the B4 district will allow if, uh, implemented as proposed by staff. Oh, I should mention, um, so as part of that 98th Street Station Area Plan, there were subsequent rezonings. Um, the image to the right shows, um, uh, about eight parcels that were rezoned from B2 to B4, again in, in furtherance of the, uh, the retro, or not the, I guess it wasn't the retrofit plan at the time, but, uh, the vision that was, uh, described in that Station Area Plan. There are three land uses, uh, guiding the parcels under consideration. Uh, there's the general business, uh, land use category, that's retail service and services such as neighborhood supermarkets, shopping centers, drugstores and the like. Uh, community commercial is general business plus a dark, additional larger scale service and retail uses, hotels, um, medium-sized shopping, uh, gro, uh, grocery centers and stuff like that or, and, uh, locations like that. And then there's one parcel in particular that is guided public. Uh, that includes, you know, park schools, or the land use is described in the comp plan, uh, or land use category is described in the comp plan as accommodating parks, schools, fire stations, uh, municipal buildings, libraries, stuff, uh, those kind of destinations. Uh, this is a map illustrating the, the assemblage of land uses, both within the areas and surround, directly surrounding it. So the 86th Street node is dominated by general business as a, a guiding land use. And, uh, counter to that, or not counter, but, uh, uh, pivoting a little bit, uh, with the 98th Street node, it's mainly guided, uh, 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 commercial, um, community commercial, uh, specifically. And then, but there is some general business in that very southwest corner and you'll see that public, that public lot or that lot guided public. That and the two lots north of it, those, that's the parking ride station for the 98th Street, uh, station, uh, which, you know, for the orange line and, uh, a lot of other, or several other transit services and, uh, routes. So if, if this rezoning were to, if it were to go, uh, be adopted, the city might want to consider regiding that parcel from public to something more supportive of the, uh, B4 district. Um, right now, uh, Metro Transit doesn't have solid plans in place to redevelop that lot, but I think there was some, uh, they, there were some concepts that they were considering, which had, uh, mixed use development occupy the site with, uh, the parking ride facilities on the, the ground floor. And then there was some retail and then ri, uh, residential above. So that's a concept, no firm plans though in place. Uh, current, uh, current zoning is, uh, as I mentioned, is, uh, B2 or general commercial. Here, one second. Move this out of the way. Um, it's designed to provide for a wide variety of retail and other commercial uses. The goals are to ensure locations are distributed throughout the city are available for needed retail and commercial and that includes auto oriented. So right there, you see the conflict between B2 and what's described in the Lyndale retro, uh, Lyndale Avenue retrofit plan. So the proposed zoning is for, uh, B4 neighborhood, uh, community commercial. That's designed for, to provide for neighborhood scale, commercial and residential mixed uses. The goals below, um, or defined below, or sorry, listed below, you know, you know, those are very illustrative of the type of vision that's, um, expected of Lyndale Avenue as it's redeveloped, especially in those node areas. So promoting an attractive, uh, streetscape, uh, restricting incompatible uses, uh, walkable, bikeable, um, reviews, uh, reduce the visual impact of parking. So moving some of that parking from street side to, uh, to the side of the building or behind the building preferably. Um, and just creating those residential opportunities to bring, uh, the, the needed population to not only support businesses, but also support the dense urban walk, uh, walkability of the area. Here's the current zoning. Um, again, it's all B2, that's the reason why we're here. Um, and you'll see on, uh, for the 98th Street node, uh, those lots that were rezoned to B4. On the 80, 86th Street node, it should be noted, like, uh, the properties on the east side of Lyndale Avenue, those were recently rezoned to transitional industrial. Um, a feature of that, uh, district is that it does allow residential opportunities. So we're trying to reflect those residential oppo, or we're proposing to reflect, reflect those, uh, residential opportunities on both sides of Lyndale Avenue. This is a comparison of, oh, I, I apologize. It's, uh, it's not labeled, well, nonetheless, so that middle column is B2 and the column on the very far right is B4. I'll make that adjustment later. But, uh, some, uh, differences to highlight in terms of standards are that there's a higher FAR for B4, if, if residential is included, so it goes up to two. There's, uh, uh, bigger side area that's, um, expected for B4 as opposed to B2. So we're, we're encouraging larger development and there's a lot of opportunity within the parcels, um, either parcel, the parcel itself or to assemble parcels to create those developments that meet the standards for B4. And then there's, um, a minimum or there's a minimum, uh, front setback that's much shallower compared to B2 when looking at the B4 standards. And, um, as I mentioned before, you know, we're encouraging that parking or we're restricting that parking to the side or to the rear. So, uh, with any rezoning project, uh, non-conformity is an interest. Just making sure that the, if there is non-conformities created, they're minimized to the greatest degree possible. It was included in the staff report, a table or an exhibit that was highlighting what parcels, um, according to their use or would be non-conforming if the rezoning were to go through. And I believe it was five parcels out of the 28. One of those parcels has multiple uses, but both uses actually are not allowed in the B4 zoning district, so it kind of works out that way. Um, just to note that, uh, non-conformities are created on a lot when it does not meet standards of the underlying zoning district, but a legal non-conformity is established when all the lot conditions have received all the required approvals. They can continue. So if this rezoning were to go forward, those parcels that, you know, would have a non-conforming use or any other non-conforming feature, if that's building design or a lot characteristic, they could continue, um, but they would not be allowed to expand that non-conformity. And it should be noted that the legal non-conforming status, it's important to note that it's, it runs with the land, it doesn't go with the property owner. So, um, if someone else were to move in, they wouldn't have to suddenly bring their property into compliance. They would, they would have legal non-conforming status so long as they met the, uh, criteria and that second bullet point at the bottom. Here's a visual display of what those parcels look like that would, by their use would not meet the, uh, the standards for B4, the use standards. Um, staff did engage or we attempted to engage, uh, uh, property owners and other folks that work in the area. Um, we decided on a consult level of participation and with that, we, uh, set up a Let's Talk Bloomington page, uh, to host products of this. And with that, we uh set up a let's talk Bloomington page uh to host products of this uh process. Early May, we sent out mailers. So we inform people that this process was kicking off and that there are multiple ways for them to engage staff if they have any questions or if they have any comments or concerns that they would like us to address. Um, we visited each property in early May as well to again have that face to face interaction and see if we could talk about the opportunities, but also address any concerns that they may have. Um, at the latter half of May, we held two open houses, a virtual one and an in person one. The virtual one was um quote unquote, a bust. Um, not too many, no one attended. Um, but that's fine. Um, the in person one, there were, there were a few people who attended, but um I guess what what I take from that or um, I guess just speaking on my own behalf is uh just uh that it it hasn't generated any controversy at the time. So um nonetheless, we we were able to have some conversations with folks. We did receive actually, uh, I should have mentioned, we did receive a an email in support of the rezoning and that was for um, that's kind of hard to point out. Is my cursor? Yep, there it is. So that property right there, the owner of that property um did send an email of support of the rezoning actually and early and as soon um as soon as they got the the mailer informing of this process. So um I apologize for not including that in the staff report. Next steps, uh, we'll have a city council study session. We'll, we'll bring up the same uh issues that we're discussing tonight. Um, but we're also gonna bring a resolution to initiate that rezoning. So begin that rezoning process. Um, uh, mid August, we'll have a public, we're tentatively scheduling a, expecting a public uh hearing at that plan, planning commission meeting. And then uh the first uh city council meeting in September, we'll have another public hearing to hopefully move forward with the uh staff's recommendation. But uh with that, I can take any questions that you may have.
Thanks for that. Um, I have a question partly for myself and also partly just for anyone who might be following along. Back a couple of slides, when you talked about the um replace uh but not expand kind of uh, there you go. So repair, replacement, restoration, but not expansion. So if, for example, I ran one of these um businesses that was in yellow on here. I'll just pick one. Say I'm running a vehicle repair minor, Valvoline. Um, and the building is scraped and replaced. And maybe it's retail with residential above, but the retail component is not any bigger. Is that considered a replacement? Or is that considered an expansion? Cause the business itself is not expanding. Just trying to understand how restrictive is this on those businesses?
Chair Roman, are you, are you referring to changing the
So if we
The business from
If we rezone this
Yes.
The business is allowed to continue.
Yep.
For for these things that you say, which are, which I, you know, we know that those are the case. If that facility was to be removed but rebuilt, would that business be able to continue in a similar size? Would that be considered a replacement? I guess is the question.
Chair Roman, uh, yes, if I understand your question, you you just are, you're speaking to replacing the building with the same business inside. It's the same physical dimensions, same location on
That business is, but the building might now be four stories.
Oh, okay. My apologies.
Yeah.
I believe it's um I'm just, okay.
It's okay if you don't have an answer. It's just, I'm trying to understand is that, you know, there, I understand that there are different types of businesses that you want in certain zoning areas, but I'm just trying to get my head around, is there a a path where those businesses might, again, they, you know, a Valvoline is probably a bad example above four stories of residential, but you know, we've got pawn shop in there, for example, and if that was similar size, would that be able to return in a building that was different, but it was replacing the retail footprint?
Uh, Chair Roman, I believe if the, if it's the, it's, if it's the nonconformity, that's not being expanded, but
Sure.
Whatever's added is in compliance, it's different, but it's in compliant or compliance. It's a similar use, then that would be appropriate, but it wouldn't be expanding the Valvoline. Wouldn't be adding another uh maintenance bay or anything. Um, it would be maintaining that footprint and so there wouldn't be any additional traffic. It wouldn't be an in increase of that nonconforming use.
It was just, yeah, it was more of a, we're not, we're not setting for sure. It was just kind of a thing I was trying to get my head around.
Yeah, Chair Roman, uh, Bloomington's nonconformity standards uses the term substantially equivalent. As long as the replacement use is substantially equivalent to the original. That can work. So you could tear it down, rebuild it as long as that new tenant space is substantially equivalent to what had been there previously.
Thank you. Sorry, that was a long convoluted question, but I knew what the voices in my head knew what I was asking. Um, this is a study item, so um, yes, Commissioner Albrecht.
I have a few questions. My first question is, can you tell me the difference between community commercial and general business?
Yeah, uh, Chair Roman, Commissioner Albrecht. Not off the top of my head. But uh, these are the uh, these, these are the uh descriptions that are provided in the comprehensive plan. Um, I believe there's a even longer description within the staff report. Uh, setting up that distinction between the two uh community commercial is subsuming all the uses uh that are allowed in general business, but adding that larger scale service ag- owing to that um larger lot size needed to accommodate some of the uses that are allowed within the B four district. Or just within, I'm sorry, the commu- sorry, talking about land use, within the commercial, those lots that are guided community commercial. So um we have the guided land use, but then we have the the zoning and underlying zoning that's uh uh restricting or not restricting, but narrowing on the the types of uses. So you see, um, for instance, under general business, gas stations. I I believe those other uses would be appropriate for um the B four zoning district, except gas stations. Those would not be appropriate. Or those, those, I'm not appropriate, not be allowed. So those are not allowed uses. So it's trying to find the harmony between the general business land use guidance and the B four district that we're proposing. Um, I hope that answered your question. If it didn't, I'm happy to try to take another stab at it.
That was helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Abdi.
Thank you, Chair. Um the image that you showed of the five properties that were, no, not not necessarily conform, I guess what the question was trying to get at, this is a city led effort to rezone these sites from B two to B four. There were if there were like twenty properties, you said, if all of them were to ag- be against the rezoning, would the city be moving forward with it? Or even if you had, you know, what would be a ratio of property owners? Cause the rezoning would be subject to only these properties, not other properties in the area. Um, if all, for example, hypothetically were were against the rezoning, um, I don't know why they would be, but if they were to be against it, would the city say, would the city still move forward with the initiative to rezone? Or would they walk away and say, uh, we tried?
Uh, Chair Roman, Commissioner Abdi, that's a policy question and we've had policy determined not only in the comp plan and that ninety eighth street station area plan, but also the the retrofit plan. So to, this uh, this project is, is a um with how did they just, sorry, um, it was a key task. I believe that was the term that they used in the retrofit plan. This was a a key project in order to implement the retrofit plan. So if there was any deviation from that plan, I believe, I mean, that's a, that's uh reconsidering policy that's already been established. And there might be good reason to do that if you had a a a very clear majority, up to twenty out of twenty eight properties that did not um did not uh or were not in support of this rezoning. That would be quite a concern and I suppose that would be good evidence to maybe reconsider the policies, but um from uh, I wasn't here for those previous projects, but I believe there were extensive community engagement activities that were um that were, that were done throughout those planning processes. So my uh, I imagine that they, they, they received the buy in and then the city council was pretty confident to adopt those policies. But, you know, it's been a few years. I guess um things change. But uh, yeah, that would be a po- repo- uh, policy reconsideration, that's for sure.
I think we have had times before in other parts of the city where the city has had a future vision that um maybe significant amounts of land we're not in favor of. Um, but that's where I think it goes back to the, the, you know, the replacement substantially equivalent kind of thing is, you know, if you've been doing what you're doing, it's not a problem. It's just that you aren't going to be tripling it. But I, my, my recollection is that, and again, this is the city council thing, our recommendation to them eventually, but there have been other parts of the city where the property was not thrilled with the idea.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Ramon Olson, uh, this evening, this is a study item. So if I were a property owner and I really disliked this, I wouldn't have an opportunity to speak before us tonight. So for those uh watching at home and or who may own a business in this corridor, can you, and forgive me if you already talked about it, walk through sort of the global process of this? Presumably this will come back before as a public hearing. Folks will have a chance to testify before us in the city council. So two parts, could you walk through that global? Uh, thank you. I I apparently didn't, didn't catch this part, but if you could walk through this again, would be appreciated. And then also specifically what you're asking from us tonight during this study item.
Yes, uh, Chair Roman, Commissioner Cookton, um, yeah, just to recount, uh, I think, yeah, this slide lays out the process from uh, from here on out. Um, just to recap that we did, we, we started the engagement back in early May when this project formally kicked off and we provided numerous avenues for people to um, to provide feedback or express their concerns, have their concerns addressed by staff, or have those concerns taken into consideration to be um then relayed back to you. Um, uh, again, we did get that one email of support. But uh, you know, tonight is one study session. We'll have another study session. Um, actually should have been more should have been more uh detailed. It was July tenth. That's when the city council will also take up this item to study it. Um, and they'll also consider a resolution to initiate the rezoning. Um, we'll be accepting comments from here up until, well, September eleventh, when it's being, you know, if if it is on track per this schedule that I've laid out. But we'll have a a public hearing uh in mid, mid August, August seventeenth, and then we'll have another one on September eleventh. And um, that's when uh anyone, the public can provide that direct testimony, either in support or, you know, uh, whatever comments they want to provide. Um, but we have closed out the community engagement portion, um, where we're directly engaging folks, but we are we are uh open to receiving that feedback or having those conversations if, if uh, if that's appropriate.
It does. Thank you. And uh, being that this is a study session for us this evening, is there anything specific you're looking for from this body to help you along with your process?
Sorry, Chair, uh, Commissioner, yes, uh, sorry, I neglected that part. Um, yes, we are just looking on feed, uh, looking to feedback. We're not provo- uh, we're not um seeking to revise any standards, just merely rezoned from B two to B four and to maintain those standards that are already associated with those districts. So if there's any other feedback you have concerning the proposal, the the parcels, if it um, if it aligns with those plans that I, uh, that have been discussed in the staff report and tonight, um, if you have any other feedback and maybe we can reconsider something if you, if you feel that's appropriate.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, I think this is a uh overall then a positive step in the right direction. Uh, I'm going to reserve judgment on whether I think it's the right thing until we can hear from the public. If we get tremendous amounts of pushback, that certainly affects my decision. And so I I'm in no position to say whether I like it or not. But I think it's a positive step in the, in the right direction and certainly seems to align with the Lyndale Avenue retrofit plan, which I am supportive of. So although I'll reserve final judgment when we can have a public hearing and and hear from our residents and our business owners, I think what we've seen here this evening, what I've seen here this evening is is just fine.
Yeah, I would say I think you're heading in the right direction. Um, I think doing this sooner than later is good. We've, you know, we've had projects that have come along and in one of these nodes that, actually we had projects in both of these nodes. One that we um did not move forward on because it wasn't consistent with the vision and one that the vision wasn't finished, but the, the uh developer was willing to kind of go along with what we were thinking. So um, I, I am, uh, I think you're heading in the right direction. I would encourage you to keep moving on this and and I also appreciate that, you know, you've been to each of these property, staff have been to each of these properties specifically in person. And so um, that I think is a, a positive thing too. So I don't, I don't have any moving feedback for you. Commissioner Cookton.
Uh, one further question, Mr. Chair. So globally, we've done some work along this corridor for transitioning to this new transitional industrial zone. Uh, we did that work. Now, this chunk of the pie is being taken up. In terms of the Lyndale Avenue retrofit plan, is there more rezonings, reguidings coming? Is this sort of the last piece of that? I apologize for catching you off guard, but where are we at in the long term process of the Lyndale Avenue retrofit um strategy?
Uh, Chair Roman, Commissioner Cookton, I'm gonna have to defer to my other planning colleagues. They are they're a little bit more familiar with what came out of the, this seems to be guided primarily by the retrofit plan and the action items that were described in, in that document. So if um, I may have to defer to them to see what else is on the plate after this project.
Chair Roman, Commissioner Cookton, this would be the last rezoning step outlined in the Lyndale retrofit. We had the kind of two rounds of B two to B four uh rezoning and then the transitional industrial zoning. Um, so there would be other implementation steps to obviously implement the plan, but in terms of uh proactive rezoning recommended by the plan, that would wrap it up. Uh, Mr. Chair, please stop me if I'm drifting too far from the application at hand.
It's a study item, so there is no formal structure or scope.
Very well. Um, there was also talk in that plan about possible changes to Lyndale itself, adding bike lanes or boulevard trees and other things. Where are we at in that part of the process?
Uh, Chair Roman, Commissioner Cookton, uh, there, there's no funding identified. There's no, I I haven't seen any plans identified for, for Lyndale. Uh, there were some illustrations provided in this uh, the retrofit plan, but uh and some cross sections that were also illustrated, but those are illustrative. Um, those aren't coming from uh the city's public works department. So I believe that's pretty far off any reconstruction of Lyndale. I think there was something that was recently completed. I believe we have. Ryan, if you
I'd have to imagine also the county road, so we'd be kind of subject to when the county's ready to
Oh.
reconstruct to, I would guess.
Lyndale is actually not a county road.
Oh, it's not.
It's the one exception on
Not anymore.
North of South Streets.
I stand corrected.
Hi, Chair Roman.
The road out of town, but that was a long time ago.
Yeah, Chair Roman, Nick Johnson, uh, if I may, just add a little bit of uh um additional information uh about kind of Lyndale going forward. I appreciate the question. Um, the way, the way that we have a, a staff uh working group uh who's established to kind of continue uh keeping the momentum going uh on Lyndale. So Tom and I are members of that group. Brian is a group, a member of that group. There's a few other uh key players uh who are involved in trying to keep the momentum going, but uh it's good, uh, um, a good way to think about Lyndale is is very much the public space versus the private space. So these rezoning actions with transitional industrial and of course this B four action is very much in line with that private space, how to reconsider uh the rules and regulations around the private space. Uh, other things that the city could be proactively doing on the private spaces, trying to secure funding for uh potentially brownfield or other environmental uh issues that do exist along the area. Some of the areas industrial. Um, there's other policy that the city could consider uh to try and kind of mitigate land use conflicts uh along those lines. On the, the street side of it, um, so Tom's right that the plan does include a lot of uh potential uh kind of like at a vision or at a high level, uh, a lot of uh changes to the Lyndale Avenue corridor. Um, the next logical step that really needs to happen in order to put a finer pencil to those things is to do a corridor study. And that's something we've kind of had just early conversations uh with our traffic and engineering staff about uh potentially getting that on their uh work plan here, either the next year or the year that follows. We're trying to push them uh, you know, uh, as hard as we can on that, cause we want to support the vision of Lyndale uh retrofit as well. Uh, so, but the next logical step is doing a corridor study of Lyndale. And that's where, where you really get to that five thousand foot level. I'm using Kirk Roberts uh kind of terminology that he's expressed to me. Uh, but right now, the plan, uh, kind of the roadway segments, as Tom said, and the, the plan is very much just a, a vision. It doesn't, it doesn't, uh, account for a very detailed, uh, transportation study of the corridor. Um, it's, it's, it, there's a, there's a lot going on in the corridor, there's trucks, uh, you know, so you have to balance some of those things with, uh, the other multimodal, uh, goals, uh, for the corridor associated with the vision. So they have to do a more detailed study of it to really move that next step, to know what they potentially could construct, uh, in the future. So hopefully that provides a little bit more info about kind of the broader picture of retrofit beyond just this B2, B4 study.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Johnson, and it's never too early to think about that 2024 work plan, Mr. Chair. So, uh, you can count me in as a proponent of a corridor study for Lyndale. It's a priority, at least for me on this commission, and my sense it is for other folks as well, not to speak for them. But it's something I certainly have interest in and, and I appreciate that we are trying not to lose momentum on it. So thank you for that.
Any other feedback for staff on this item? Did you get what you needed?
Uh, Chair Roman, yes, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, we look forward to seeing what comes next. Item five, another study item, is, um, a potential mural ordinance, and Senior Planner Johnson has this item.
Thank you, Chair Roman, uh, while I get set up here, I want to, and commission members, of course, uh, how are y'all doing? Um, uh, I want to point out that Kevin Toski with Legal and Alejandra Palinka, the Director of Creative Placemaking, uh, are also on the call. So this element, um, this, uh, uh, next item that we'll discuss, uh, very much especially with, uh, your role as, uh, Land Use and Zoning Advisory Board to the City of Bloomington or to the City Council, uh, very much is within that space. But this one is one that crosses over into other lanes and spaces as well. So if you're looking for expertise kind of in those areas that you think are, uh, relevant, don't hesitate to, um, call on their expertise, uh, as well. And thank you both for being at the meeting, Kevin and Alejandra. Let's see here. Okay, so what we're here to discuss, uh, this evening is some potential, uh, city code amendments, uh, as well as a supportive policy, uh, that would kind of, uh, reimagine how the city, uh, regulates, uh, murals, uh, in Bloomington. And we'll talk about why that's, uh, necessary, uh, here, um, and kind of what our vision is, uh, for that. So first, just a little bit of background, um, if we're all kind of starting from the same place, just a, um, context setter is that, uh, for the most part, I think all the decision makers, uh, in Bloomington, uh, for the most part have been very supportive and excited, uh, around the deployment and installation of murals around Bloomington. There's been a number that have been installed, of course, since Creative Placemaking has been created, but of course here on Civic Plaza and the Arts Center. Um, uh, and so we've heard a lot of positive feedback, uh, about, um, uh, murals in Bloomington. Uh, and there has been kind of an ongoing, uh, interest, um, of how to, uh, create, uh, pathways to, um, uh, to have greater allowances for them. So the first point really is just, um, that, uh, murals, and I think kind of the purpose and intent statement of the draft ordinance, as it was laid out for you, kind of lays this out pretty well, but do have value, uh, in kind of promoting expression. They do add sense of place, uh, they, um, uh, do build community in kind of unseen ways. Um, but that, some of those things, and we'll talk about that with the standards, do have to be balanced with some kind of maintenance of, uh, community aesthetic appearance standards, but also, uh, kind of public health, safety, welfare, uh, considerations. So that's kind of, you know, that's really strikes at the heart of what this, uh, policy is attempting to do. Um, the main reason that we're here and why city code or amendments is that the current zoning code is not particularly friendly, uh, to murals. And the primary reason for that has to do with, uh, the coatings restriction, um, within our exterior materials standards. Uh, so we'll talk about that in a little bit more specific detail when we get there. In terms of what brought us to this point, kind of why we're moving ahead with presenting you a draft ordinance this evening, uh, if you recall in January of this year, uh, the, on the, the city's work plan for this year, the planning commission work plan for this year is the sign ordinance. And when we were studying the sign ordinance, one of the things that we discussed, uh, was, uh, murals as part of that discussion. And at that time, and maybe as part of previous efforts too, murals and signs were kind of always, uh, linked to one another uh, from a regulatory framework, or at least in kind of the, the minds of, uh, folks working on it. Um, and as we started to think about it more, uh, we actually came to the conclusion, and some of the case law, uh, has also drawn, uh, um, uh, kind of driven us to this point as well, um, just around expression. Uh, but ultimately we got to the conclusion that, uh, that these things don't necessarily have to be, uh, closely aligned or coupled. They can be decoupled, uh, they do need to talk to one another, um, there is in, uh, some various ways. Um, uh, but ultimately what we did, what we decided is to, uh, start working on a mural ordinance, uh, as a standalone project in conjunction later, to kind of have the, the future sign ordinance talk back to it, uh, if that makes sense. Um, so what, what you're seeing before you this evening is, uh, it's a standalone project from the, uh, sign ordinance project, but I want to keep it on people's radar screens that our future work on the sign ordinance that's ongoing, uh, currently, uh, will, will, uh, be in sync with this work that we're presenting to you, uh, this evening. So in terms of a timeline of, uh, what we're looking at, um, so, uh, the work of murals is very much, um, in terms of the commissioning of them more recently in Bloomington, has very much been on, um, uh, the, the efforts and responsibilities of creative, creative placemaking, they have an advisory commission similar, uh, to planning commission. Staff did present this, the, the kind of structure, not the specifics, but the structure of this policy, uh, at the last creative placemaking, uh, commission. And, um, generally speaking, they were very supportive of our approach. Um, they were excited that, uh, there's the potential for greater opportunity, um, to pursue this. Um, I forgot to say a very important point about the background, one second. When we looked at this, uh, in January, I said, you've talked about it, both the planning commission and city council were unanimously supportive of, uh, pursuing, uh, policies that opened the door for more murals. Pretty important point, uh, that I forgot. Uh, and as you recall, that, uh, polling activity we did with the clickers, a lot of those were split votes, you know, two-two, three-two, you know, uh, maybe four-one in some cases, but the murals was five-zeros across the board, it was always unanimous. Uh, one of the things I reflected on, uh, from that evening. So murals, uh, really passed the, that polling test, uh, with flying colors. But yeah, getting back to this, so sorry to go off, uh, course there, Creative Placemaking reviewed this on June 7th. Uh, just as part of that, just want to communicate that, um, uh, we've been working with, uh, the Director of Creative Placemaking very closely on this one, um, and something that they do want to see go forward, the commission, uh, members were very supportive of that. So we're here before you this evening to do a study session, to really bring, uh, a draft ordinance before you, to answer your questions, to get your feedback on whether or not it's on the right track, uh, from a land use and zoning perspective. Um, and then if it is in case, uh, so Commissioner Cookton, you asked, uh, what are, what are we looking for? We're looking for kind of similar feedback, are we on the right track, uh, more simply put? Yeah, staff, keep going forward, that's kind of what we're looking for. So, um, should we go forward, Creative Placemaking, uh, Commission would then reconvene at their July meeting on the 12th. We'd be seeking a formal recommendation or letter of support from them, uh, at that meeting. And then at that point, we would, uh, schedule some public hearings at Planning Commission and, uh, City Council, um, like any typical ordinance process. In terms of the approach, um, uh, this is a little bit different than a lot of the city code, uh, amendments and other policy that the city has adopted, but it is modeled on something that has worked really well, uh, for planning staff. And that has, that is the, the landscaping ordinance. Uh, the landscaping ordinance has the hard and fast rules within the landscaping, uh, provisions of our city code, but it also has an administrative, uh, supportive policy that is adopted by city council originally and is referenced embedded in city code, but has a lot of, uh, elements to it that are more, um, advisory or, uh, design guidelines or recommendations. So what would that be in the area of landscaping, what would that be? It would be like tree species, you know, what are more salt tolerant, uh, material versus not for parking lots, for example? So this, uh, when we started considering this, and, uh, this is not an area of public policy that is widely developed all around the country, not every community has a murals ordinance or a murals policy. It's very much more, uh, um, uh, kind of on the leading edge, I guess, of it. Not to say that there aren't cities that have had policies for several years, um, but you're not going to find murals provisions in, um, uh, except very kind of basic elements in a lot of other cities. So, um, we thought that, uh, this approach that we came up with or that we modeled off of the landscaping ordinance of having the hard and fast rules be within city code, uh, but also have this supportive policy document that truly is administered by the, uh, Creative Placemaking, uh, Director and the Planning Manager, kind of those two different lanes of expertise, uh, um, coming together, uh, as being a really good approach because it would give the city the opportunity to kind of make really, um, uh, uh, clear, uh, guidance and recommendations around, uh, certain elements of murals. Um, and certainly things that we don't think is necessarily, uh, appropriate or perfectly fit within city code. Uh, the other element just to that more simply is it just because it's an easier way to outline all the administrative elements. You know, what is all the required content of a mural permit application have to have within it? Um, having it in a supportive policy gives, uh, that staff the ability, uh, to kind of refine and change those things as needed, uh, so long as those elements are not in conflict with anything that's within the city code. Obviously, the city code, uh, nothing, uh, within that policy could be, uh, adopted that would be in conflict with that. So hopefully that, uh, makes some sense, I know it's not a common approach to a lot of the things we deal with, um, but murals are not a, a common thing, uh, that we deal with either. So in terms of, uh, the content of the murals ordinance itself, I'm just going to touch briefly on the bolded items, but these, what's on your screen before you is kind of the, the basic elements, uh, of what's contained within the draft ordinance. So getting to the definition, there's just a couple of things I want to touch on, I'm not going to read this, uh, word for word, um, but the couple of things I wanted to touch on, um, is that, A, the definition attempts to make clear differentiation between, uh, murals and signage, that's an important element and will be important as we adopt new sign standards. Um, it does include, uh, a, uh, provision that uniform painting or coating of an exterior building surface does not constitute a mural, we'll talk a little bit more about our area standards later. Um, but, uh, Bloomington having a painting or coating restriction, uh, we do want to, uh, ensure that murals does not become, uh, end run, uh, kind of around some of those, uh, uh, regulatory provisions. Um, and then we also want to differentiate it from, uh, graffiti, that was important to environmental health staff, uh, and makes perfect sense to me, um, and just for the, for the, for your benefit and for the public's benefit. Graffiti, obviously we see, uh, um, uh, things in murals or on buildings that appears to be, uh, graffiti. That's not how, like, from a public policy perspective, um, uh, graffiti is an art form, uh, colloquially or commonly known as. But in this, uh, sense graffiti is things that are etched or painted on buildings without property owner consent. So I just want to make that clear distinction, um, in that. In terms of, uh, now things that are, uh, getting more hard to the zoning code and development things that you deal with. So as I mentioned, uh, the exterior material standards does have restrictions on painting and coating of, uh, primary materials. And so what this ordinance would do is it would create an exception to that coating restriction for, uh, murals that have been approved as part of a mural permit, uh, process that's reviewed by staff. Um, so if you get a mural permit approved, uh, the design is good to go, the plans are all, um, uh, consistent with code as reviewed by staff, uh, you have now granted yourself an exception to this coating restriction theoretically. If, if the mural is a painted, uh, mural or a coating, not all murals are, um, uh, painted, I should make that distinction. Uh, but it does allow for that. Um, the other thing in our current ordinance, uh, which, and I talked about kind of barriers or that the code is unfriendly to murals, the current code actually explicitly states that murals cannot be applied to a primary, uh, build, directly to a building elevation currently. And so this would, uh, strike that language, that it can't be directly applied. Getting to the mural permit, uh, process, uh, don't need to linger here too long, but, um, uh, similar to a sign permit, uh, someone would, before installing a mural would have to get a mural permit, um, it would be a ru- reviewed administratively, uh, it'd be a hundred dollar, uh, fee as currently proposed. Um, the Creative Placemaking Director and Planning Manager would be the two, uh, assigned, uh, authorities, uh, to, uh, approve that permit. Um, and again, this is just one of those areas, it's kind of odd to have two, uh, different authorities in that regard, but this is one of those areas where you just have two distinctly different, uh, areas of expertise. Uh, and, uh, uh, just an administrative point, if, uh, the public or the, the applicant, I should say, um, not the public, but if the applicant, uh, disagreed with a staff decision related to a mural permit, um, there would be, uh, ability to appeal that decision to the city council. And this kind of follows some other similar, uh, not often used permit types, uh, within our city code, like tent permits and some other things. So getting to prohibited mural types, this is really where, uh, we have to, uh, rely on our, uh, legal colleague, our colleagues in legal. Uh, and I should say that on a preliminary level, we have had some, uh, discussions around murals with the same, uh, consulting attorney, uh, who is working with staff on the sign ordinance, uh, John Baker with Green Espal. Um, and Kevin Toski and I, um, have been, uh, studying this issue quite a bit. Um, laws, um, uh, or case law around expression has changed quite a bit in the last, uh, five to 10 years. Um, and so, uh, while, um, we want to make sure, again, and with respect to prohibited murals, this is a perfect example of having, wanting to strike that balance of allowing for greater expression, but also, uh, protecting public health peace, uh, or public health, um, uh, and safety. Uh, so prohibited mural types, the city is really at a quite limited, uh, position, uh, to regulate content. That's not the intent of this by any means, um, but what we do want to do is, uh, create the necessary provisions, uh, or include the necessary provisions that, uh, that basically, um, would protect against, uh, areas where there could be a threat to public safety. And these are areas where the current case law, and Kevin can talk about this in greater detail if there's interest, um, in that, but where, um, uh, the city is better positioned or more on firm legal ground, um, to restrict some of these things, uh, according to Supreme Court decisions related to First Amendment stuff. So imitating an official traffic sign, obviously that could be a threat to vehicular pedestrian safety if you had a mural that looked like a streetlight, uh, right next to an intersection or something. Um, uh, obscuring or concealing life safety equipment, that's something that's really important to the fire marshal. Obviously you got fire department connections or you have alarms or, uh, if you paint over those things or obscure those things, then, uh, uh, public safety staff can't, uh, find that equipment, that would not be, uh, an acceptable condition. Then these next three, uh, are really reliant on some of those legal, uh, arguments, but, uh, are important. Um, murals that could incite or produce imminent lawless action, murals that convey threats of violence at persons or groups. This is kind of the paraphrased snippet on the screen, but the fuller ordinance has a little more language. And then murals that are, uh, involve sexual conduct in a patently offensive way. Um, so I don't anticipate this to be, uh, a problem, um, in the future, uh, but, um, should there, uh, be any issues, um, uh, with, uh, the content of a mural that was in clear violation of some of these standards, then the city could, uh, use these provisions to, um, deny, uh, said mural permit. Getting to the general standards, I'm not going to touch on all of these either, uh, but I did throw a number of them on the slide. I want to touch on four of them, but, uh, a maximum area, I talked about the potential for a kind of end around of, uh, a building wants to be coated, uh, but, um, so they apply for a mural permit because they know it's their only way to potentially coat, um, on their building. Uh, this area provision would limit the, um, maximum amount of, uh, coating to 50% or murals on a building would be limited to 50% of the elevation area. Um, in terms of, uh, projection, and that's not, not to be confused with, uh, um, visual projection, that's a different category of art, kind of projection art, but projecting like physical projection from the building. Some murals do involve three, are three-dimensional and do involve actually mounting objects or, uh, shapes or patterns of, uh, with different objects on, onto a building. And so what this standard would create is a maximum projection of, uh, two feet. Um, it also includes a standard about not encroaching into public easements of record, um, uh, which is important to, uh, engineering and public works. Um, in terms of signage, um, so, uh, again, thinking about the decoupling, that these things are not necessarily the same thing. Um, uh, murals may be incorporated into a sign, into, or I should say, signs can be incorporated into a mural, uh, but with limitations, so limited to 10% of the, the mural area. And then, uh, the last one I'll touch on is just kind of no flash, uh, motion or flashing. Um, uh, you can't have mechanical or electrical components that, uh, create motion and things within the, within the, uh, mural itself. Um, we're suggesting that because those are current restrictions, prohibitions within our sign ordinance. Uh, so we would do want to try and have some consistency between those things when it makes sense. Um, the, I guess the last thing I'll say about it, and we discussed this at Creative Placemaking Commission too, is that the technology and the methods and the styles of murals are, are changing at a pretty fast pace. So it wouldn't surprise me as over the next 10 years, if, you know, this catches on or if some, uh, folks are interested in installing murals, that, you know, the city might be in a position to have to revisit some of these standards over time, assuming that public health, safety, welfare can be maintained with some of those changes. Uh, but that, you know, it's kind of an arena that's, uh, changing quickly as our, as our science, uh, for that matter. for that matter. So I won't go into great detail about the murals policies and procedures document that was also in your packet for your consideration, but what I will say about it, I kind of mentioned before, this is really the, the main opportunity to out, to outline some of those administrative procedures. So what, what are the required items you have to have in your mural permit application? And then it's also an opportunity for staff to communicate design guidelines and recommendations to artists or entrepreneurs or building owners in a way to make sure that they're Marylanders, that it's the, the site or the surface is well prepped, some maintenance considerations as well. And I, I didn't include a slide about maintenance, but maintenance is a piece of this too. Similar to other components of, of permits, you do need to have an approved maintenance plan. This code would also give the city the ability to require repair of a mural that was, fell into a state of disrepair. So those are the main provisions I wanted to discuss with you, and I think what staff is really looking for is to make sure we're on the right track and to make sure this is consistent with what all these, with what planning commission, city council and creative placemaking kind of envisioned when we got that unanimous support to move forward. So happy to take questions.
Thanks. Discussion and feedback for staff. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions. First off, I was, the first thing I wrote down when you were talking about was painting brick, because I know that's something that's come, come to our desks a few times and usually is not approved. So it's just a comment, but, so question regarding the review and approval process. Let's say, for example, Mr. Market Guard says no, and your placemaking manager says yes. What happens then?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Chair. Commissioner Albrecht, so we do have one other process in city code that has multiple approvers, actually has three, city assessor, city engineer and planning manager. It's the tax parcel combination process, so it's kind of like plat light. It's for, well, it's not changing boundaries, but it's basically changing legal entities. It's like, it's basically replaces the zoning lot process. So we've had a few of those applications, that very specific arrangement that you talk about has not occurred in, in those arrangements. I would assume that the two people within those roles would maintain a professional relationship in terms of their review and analysis and understanding, but from just a city code perspective, if the, the authorities who are identified to review and were necessary to approve it, then that permit would not be approved at that point. They would have the opportunity to appeal, of course, but yes.
Yeah. Chair Roman and Commissioner Albrecht, I'd just point out that whether a denial is from one of the two parties or from both parties, applicant could always appeal that, and that would come before the planning commission and city council.
Just, just city council as currently.
Oh, it's set up for just city.
Just city council, sorry. Sorry to interrupt there. The, the other thing I would say too is, just to provide a little more background, is that the Creative Placemaking Commission, Commissions, Murals, and so this was through an internal review process. Our original draft had the Director of Creative Placemaking being the sole approver, and for a variety of other kind of administrative reasons, just in terms of the authority of that position as identified in city code. It's not a position that's approving other development applications per se, so the reason, that's why the planning manager was brought in in that dual role, is that the planning manager under city code has the authority to approve administrative development applications, if that makes sense. But in addition to that, there was some concern that we didn't, the city did not want to be appear in a conflict of interest type situation where the, the, the person signing off on the permit serves the board and commission who is commissioning a mural, if that makes sense. It's probably way more information than you needed to know.
Yeah, I, I mean, my thought about this was art is so, people just have different preferences in art that they like and don't like, and so I just would caution that there would be a way to not have, you know, just, oh, we just don't like that, and then that doesn't become a mural. So that, that would be my only thing. My other, my other question was, is there anything in this about any like politics or political stance? For example, let's say a city council member decided they were like, well, I have this building and I'm going to put a big mural on it, but I'm also going to say X, Y, Z for council. Is that allowed?
Yeah, I, I would welcome Kevin Toski to weigh in where he thinks I'm not filling in the gaps, but one thing that we would look at, if it's, if the content of the sign, of the mere proposed mural did not touch on one of those five clear prohibited murals, the city would not be in a position to deny that application on the basis of it being prohibited. That being said, what we would have to evaluate is whether or not the proposed content does constitute a sign. If it does constitute a sign, it would most likely, it would then be limited to the 10% area that we're proposing, assuming that, you know, that the ordinance goes forward unchanged. But that, that's more intended for commercial signage, there's other forms of signage than, there's other forms of speech than commercial speech. So I don't know if Kevin, you have anything to add to that? That's a good question, though.
Yeah, do you mean Chair Roman and Commissioner Albrecht? To answer your question, yeah, once, kind of the, the thing with non-commercial expression is that when cities get into the, the, the kind of task of trying to regulate what's kosher and what's not, the courts really don't like that, so. And, you know, the courts are kind of inconsistent on, on how they apply the First Amendment laws sometimes, so, you know, kind of the risk when you open up the door to a lot of expression is you might get distasteful or, you know, expression that might, some might consider out of place or offensive or whatever it might be, and that's kind of the risky run with more expression. So the more we start regulating what content can be in murals, like the harder courts will look at it, and usually they strike down those kind of ordinance provisions with content. So what you see in the ordinance now is we prohibit several types of content, but that's already expression that's not protected by the First Amendment. So things like obscene sexual content or things that are likely to produce violence or imminent lawful action, kind of those fighting words or insults type words, that's all unregulated, so we can do that, but when you start getting into politics and the bounds of politics are kind of evolving and what's political is expanding, you get, you get into trouble with the courts that way. So we kind of wanted to stay on good First Amendment ground, so that's a, a wordy answer, but I think, you know, for our purposes, like, like I said, it's just getting into the, getting into that content regulation is tough work, so hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Is the, and I'm sorry, I didn't go back to the details of the draft ordinance, but is the 10% sign allowance, is there anything in there that's 10% or the maximum allowed under the sign ordinance? Thinking, for example, is that 10% a way to get a bigger sign than you might otherwise be allowed to have?
Yeah, Chair Roman, good question. So the sign ordinance would still be applicable, they're still subject to maximum area requirements of their wall sign, basically as it's currently constituted, we're kind of moving more towards a generic or general building sign.
Yep.
Model, but yes, so they'd be subject to both. A sign is subject to all the, if, if designate, if clear that it does meet the definition of a sign, then it's going to be subject to the sign ordinance, so it's both.
Okay, so the 10%.
And the more restrictive.
10% is not a way to get a bigger sign?
No.
Commissioner Cookden.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Mr. Johnson, I want to go back to the, to approver thing here. So when, when the two folks who are approving this, their criteria for whether it's approved or not is really those sort of bullet points of things that are not approved. It really can't be anything like, I don't like this, or it's not, they have no grounds for that. It's really, does it not offend, you know, it, does it not meet these bullet points? And if so, then it's a must approve type of a situation effectively.
Chair, Commissioner Cookden, that's correct. Assuming that they meet all the other requirements of the mural permit process, they do have to have a maintenance plan, they have to do all those other things.
Great, thank you. A different topic here, I would, could you go back to the general standards? There we go. The first bullet point is the one thing that's giving me pause about this whole thing here, the limited to 50% of the entire building elevation wall area. Could you just speak in a little more detail about that one?
Yeah, Chair Commissioner Cookden, so we've had internal discussion about that one as well. The reason where we, the reason why we landed at 50% and this ties a little bit to the definition too, so on one side you have the creatives, I'll call them, Alejandro, I'll call you the creative, kind of wanting more allowance for expression, and the reason being for that is that there's a lot of murals that have been installed that are the full building wall, 100% of a single elevation. So where we started was potentially, you know, limiting 80% of an individual elevation and then say 25% of the full buildings. But as we discussed it more and wanting to, recognizing that some murals are the full building elevation, and that if you had a, if say you had a rectangular building and say you wanted it along one of the long walls, if you had a maximum 25% of all total building sides, you're now in violation of that just on the basis of kind of the, the configuration or shape of your building in terms of one wall being a larger percentage than say a short wall would be or a, a smaller wall. So the 50% me, would mean how we would review that basically is we would total up the square footage of all four building elevations or elevation areas as we call them, and the maximum amount of murals that you could have would be 50% of that total on a building. And again, this ties back to my comment about not wanting this policy to be a potential end run around the coating restriction. And that also ties to the, the, the point in the definition about, again, this is something we're still studying and we still need to review it to make sure we're on firm legal ground. But what we don't want to have happen is someone to generically paint a wall purple and all one color and say that is my artistic expression, and have that be just a, a way to circumvent kind of the other, the other storied and well-supported standard that Bloomington has honored for a long period of time. So there's, there's competing interests here, and this is our attempt to kind of thread the needle.
Mr. Chair, this is the thing I struggle with the most. If it's 50, why can't it be 100? Like if we're allowing it on 50% and we're saying that's okay, and we're going to put in standards about it has to be repainted and has to be protected and all that stuff, then why not just let them do 100? And I was thinking about the test case of, okay, we've got an ugly brick building and the building owner wants to make it better, and we don't allow them to paint the brick because it could be a nuisance thing, but like if, again, if we're putting in standards that it has to be maintained and we're going to check on them and we have the ability to enforce that, I'm not sure if we, if we said, well, you can't paint it purple or black, but you can put a mural around the whole thing, that doesn't sound so bad to me. Like, I think that's a decent compromise, like I think we're getting something in that, like getting a full building mural, that could be kind of cool. And so for me, I, I don't like the 50% thing. I, I like 100, but I don't know, I'd be curious on other commissioners' thoughts on that.
To help me answer or visualize that question or how I would respond to that, I think kind of goes, has me questioning, is there a use restriction? Is it like, can I, is it based on residential, it has to be a commercial corridor restricted on a building, or like I'm trying, maybe I missed it in the staff report, but where are the types of walls I would expect to see a mural? Is there a restriction on districts? Or I guess that would help me kind of understand, like could I paint my entire house and say that it's artistic? Could I paint my entire fence? Or do I expect that to be on like when I'm on American Boulevard toward the apartments? So I guess I'm trying to like place my head, my brain to visualize what the standards will look like essentially.
Yeah, Chair Commissioner Abdi, that's a good question, and thanks for, I didn't mention that in my slide, so thanks for, that's an important clarification to make, is that as currently constructed, we're not proposing to have a locational limitation on where murals can be deployed. Some of that is tied to kind of how the Bloomington zoning regime is set up in terms of that we have a lot of institutional uses that are zoned R1, that are zoned residential, but actually are non-residential uses. So say if Parks and Rec or say the fire department wanted to commission a mural on the side of their fire station, if you limited it to commercial districts only, then they wouldn't be able to do that. The other thing is, I don't know if I should say this part out loud, but people can paint their homes how they want to now. There's no restriction against that, and as Kevin has mentioned, the city would not be in a, would be in a limited position to regulate content. So you can paint low density or, you know, single family homes already currently. So we're not proposing a locational restriction. We think murals can be well done in many different settings. I should note that some cities do take that approach. They limit them to downtown commercial districts or other more limited areas, but we just didn't think with the way that our zoning regime is set up that it was the best fit for Bloomington.
Thank you. I appreciate that response because I was trying to like figure out what that would look like, but if I am required to get a permit to install a mural and I can do it in a non-visible wall, like if, if it's not visible from the street level, then is the art, I guess every artist can express their, however they like, is it for the public or is it for themselves to put it out there, use it as a private visual enjoyment of, of the property owner or not? But I guess what I'm trying, struggling here with is my experience of murals are like on a publicly visible sites. If I'm required to get a permit, like how would you enforce illegally installed murals on a non-visible wall, whether it is, whatever district or whatever property use it may be, but how would you enforce something that is not required to be on just primary? I don't know if I articulated this correctly, but.
I think I understand the question.
Alley wall or alley access or, I don't know.
Yeah, Chair Commissioner Abdi, I mean, it would depend on if there, if the building is, happens to be in a zoning district that coatings is more strictly regulated or prohibited. But similar to other buildings being painted in Bloomington or any, any zoning code violation for that matter, you know, those issues get addressed through an enforcement process typically, and the goal is always to try and get them into conformance. So if, if a mural was installed without a mural permit, hopefully that was, it was done so in a way that could be consistent with code and maybe retroactively would go through a permit process to resolve that kind of enforcement issue. But I mean, it's very similar to many other things that we deal with in terms of violations of the zoning code. It's a typical enforcement process. Yeah, and whether it's public facing or not, if you institute a mural permit process, it's not as if it's only applicable to public facing building elevations, it would be applicable to all building elevations.
Thank you. I guess going back to what Commissioner Cookden was saying, I think I would concur with him on not focusing on the 50%. I think it'd just be really hard to visualize, and some of the, I think the original image you showed was like an entire wall, imagine only 50% of that, it just would like, ugh. So.
Yeah. Chair Commissioner Abdi, that's actually a good clarification too, is that the, the proposed 50% applies to buildings only, not, some of the other murals in Bloomington currently have been applied to screen walls or other structures that are not buildings, where the coating restriction does not currently apply.
Thank you for the clarification. Sorry, one last question. If a mural was installed, whoever is installing it or the property owner gets a permit, is issued because there is not a public hearing or at the time, or it is approved and it is administrative, it gets installed and the neighbor hates it, is there an appeal process to take it down?
Chair Commissioner Abdi, as.
Not offensive or whatever the standards were.
Yeah, absolutely. Chair Commissioner Abdi, assuming, so it went through the process, it was approved, as it's currently constructed, no, there would not be an appeal process reserved for the general public. And the reason for that is that as we've been discussing about expression and content, is that the city is in no legal standing to regulate content but for those very narrow tests that have been protected by the Supreme Court or designated as not violations of the First Amendment. And so, and if it wa, if that was the case, then staff would be in a position to deny that mural permit from the outset if it was violating those things that I talked. to deny that mural permit from the outset if it was violating those things that I talked about.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you Chair. I have a couple more questions and they're very specific to one project that we approved, which is the Subaru dealership. So the Subaru dealership has art, mural, whatever it happens to be, on the side of the building, but it couldn't have the Subaru lo, I remember, we couldn't have the Subaru logo in the picture. It had to be just dogs and canoes or whatever it happened to be. I mean, we've seen, and they've changed. So my two questions are clarifying, the Subaru dealership would now be able to put their logo at 10% of the total area of that mural? And is there some level of permanency that is required for the mural? Because in that case, it's, could be deemed as art, photography, whatever it happens to be. Um, but it changes over a period of time and it's more of an app, and you, you said there was, it's not just a paint deal, it could be an application or a, so those are my two questions about the dealership.
Yeah, Chair Commissioner, uh, Albrecht, so those are printed panels that were actually mounted, uh, on the building and, uh, good questions, good clarifications. Assuming that the, uh, and they actually pursued a privately initiated city code amendment, uh, to allow for signs, uh, as part of murals strictly in the motor vehicle, uh, signage for motor vehicle sales facilities. We have special use signage in the sign code and right now you can have signs incorporated no mural only in that individual use. That doesn't make any sense to staff. You're either, you either should allow signage to be incorporated to murals or, for everyone or for no one, from staff's perspective. Um, so, uh, they did pursue that, that was their right to do that and that's totally fine. Uh, the, they would be allowed to do that assuming they met the 10%, but also, uh, that as, uh, Chair Roman talked about, they're also subject to maximum sign area requirements in the sign ordinance. So they'd have to be meeting both tests. Not only would any signage being incorporated, you know, their trademark logo, um, or a very, uh, obvi, a vehicle with their logo on it, not only would they, uh, have to, uh, meet the 10%, they'd have to not exceed, uh, their maximum signage allowance, which they already have a very large wall sign also on the side of their building, which can, you know, tend to consume a lot of their sign allotment. Um, so assuming they're pa, passing all those tests, yes, but I will just tell you that, um, uh, Kevin and Alejandra and I and Glenn too, I mean, we can have very lengthy discussions about what constitutes signage as part of a mural. It's not an easier, uh, uh, straightforward thing. Um, yeah, hopefully I answered your question, uh, there, but they did pursue a code amendment to allow that, uh, privately.
And so is there, sorry, is there a requiremancy, requirement around permanency?
Yes, I'm sorry. Um, so, uh, and I wel, I welcome Alejandra to weigh in too on this question, but also on the 100%, she might, or on the 50%, she might, you know, it might be good to get her perspective about the maximum area restriction. Um, but on the permanency, um, Alejandra, uh, stop me if you think this is incorrect, uh, but basically the mural permit approval would establish what the lifespan of the mural is, what the intended lifespan is and what the plan is to remediate the mural upon, uh, kind of, or decommission, uh, the mural, if that makes sense. So as part of the maintenance plan, you would be identifying, okay, this is a 10-year mural based on the, the surface preparation and the materials, uh, that you're using to install it. That's kind of the warranty life, for lack of a better term, um, that the approval would grant for that.
So there's no minimum? If they were like, this is a five-day mural, could they do that?
Um, we're not considering a minimum, no. Yeah.
Trying to get my head around, um, and this is something fascinating, actually, this was, uh, when I, we were at the National Planning Conference in Philadelphia, there was a public art workshop that I participated in and Philadelphia is like the king, uh, queen or the, the, the world headquarters of murals, I guess, or something. It's, it's, they're, they're known for that and we toured a number of interesting things and what they talked about, and this is where this, this question is coming up for me, was that, I don't want to say it's all, but I feel like it's almost all new murals that are going up in the city are, actually they're, they're developed off the building and then they are, it's not what it is, but it's like heat thermal transferred to whatever it is so that when it comes down, what was there, the building, the brick, the, whatever it is, is, is un, unscathed, if you will. And what I'm trying to get my head around, you were talking about, you know, let's say the 10-year life and, you know, unless we have performance standards around, this is the only kind of paint you can use, how do we, how are we not left with a building that's been painted that is worse than if we'd done nothing? And so I want to support what we're going at here, but I'm wondering if, if, how do we do that or is there a different way that we should think about? You, you mentioned earlier that, you know, the tech, technology, if you will, or the, you know, the, and I say technology broadly, around mural application is changing rapidly. So that's what I'm trying to get at. It goes back to our longstanding discussion about coating buildings and brick and all that kind of thing. And so that's, that's where, for me is, how do we, how do we not have something in 10 or 15 years that's worse than if we'd left it alone? So I don't have an answer to that question about, that, it, since we're in study phase.
Yeah.
Um, you know, again, and so if it is that, you know, yep, murals can be designed, but they have to be on certain surfaces, they would have to be applied in a certain way, maybe, I don't know. Um, but that was, it was a, it was a thing that I would not have thought, because we saw some buildings where you would think that this was done with paint and it was clearly, and then that gave them the ability to replace it if it was graffitied or it was ruined, you could just reapply it. It was fascinating technology.
Thank you. Um, the maintenance question kind of had me thinking, if there is a, you know, who's on the hook for, um, maintenance responsibilities if the owner or the business or the property owner changes within that timeline that they, you had approved for? Like, is the new owner or the new business on the hook for maintaining that or is the city going to come in if it's not maintain, paint over it or what does that look like?
Yeah, Chair Commissioner Abdi would be the property owner. Their, their signature, their party to the application and it does run with the land. Uh, so, uh, my view would be that it, the property owner is responsible for that. The, the one thing I'll say to your comment, Chair Roman, is that there is a very, and again, this is another area where Alejandra can provide a lot more expertise than I can, but there is a very wide range of cost, uh, to these different types of mural application or installation. Um, and so one of the things about maybe the 100%, I haven't seen a lot of buildings that are 100% a full mural because it's so costly to install that much mural. Uh, um, one of the reasons Alejandra might have seen that. Um, but I think the big, I don't want to speak for her, but the big, uh, important piece, um, on her end of things was not to limit individual wall elevations. Um, and I think the 50% is, uh, provides quite a bit of can, for like canvas, for lack of a better term, uh, to work with. But I mean, there's certainly something could be, we revisit or, uh, I mean, it's a policy decision. The last thing I'll say from the planning staff side is that, uh, can, continuing to maintain a coatings restriction, uh, while you're allowing 100% of a building to be a painted mural, it continues to move that policy, the coatings restriction, to a more tenuous position, is what I would say.
Commissioner Cookton?
Uh, Mr. Chair, thanks. We have a article in the code and I can't recite it exactly, but in a planned development, if you put in a new structure, it has to look like other buildings in the planned development. How does this affect that?
Yeah, uh, I don't, I can pull up the la, uh, Chair Commissioner Cookton, I can pull up the specific language. I think it talks about architectural continuity or, um, complimentary, uh, I believe, maybe, uh, I, I could pull it up specifically, uh, but what, what we, what we're really looking at that with respect to that is the palette of materials. So when they're building a new building, is it brick while the old other shopping center, the, the most recent example of this to me, maybe there's been others since then, but was the Bank of America on West 98th Street to match, uh, Oxborough. Um, so what we were really looking at in that review was the palette of materials, not down to the prescriptive color necessarily, um, more so the palette of materials. So they could still apply a mural on those palette of materials and that wouldn't, I, I, as a staff person, would not view that as being architecturally inconsistent.
Right. Commissioner Abdi?
Thank you Chair. Um, for a person who is not artistically equipped, um, I think for a next presentation, I'd love to see, you know, um, I'm, I'm a little bit mentally stuck on a, what a graffiti would look like that could pass for a mural versus what a mural is. I guess there are graffiti words that could be sprayed, painted on a wall, but there are also artistically beautiful arts of graffiti, are this not considered mural? Or like, I think just like a borderline of, you know, what is and what is not potential mural using the word graffiti? I know here it says graffiti is prohibited and I think in the report, in the definition, it mentions, um, in, under the definition of mural, it says, "A mural is a separate and distinct from a graffiti," which is defined elsewhere in 12.7 of this code. I couldn't find the 12.7 of this code, maybe I just was scrolling too fast. Um, but even then, I feel like as you're doing engagement or coming to different bodies who are not artistically equipped like I am, I think just visually, um, demonstrating what the code is trying to avoid. Um, you know, words thrown on a wall, that's a graffiti and that should be taken down versus artistically drawn, get a permit. Um, so I guess just try, trying to figure out what that looks like for future presentations. I think as, as a sample, if it does come up, if there is any interest from the commissions or the council, I think that would be really helpful, especially if the questions about, uh, what a graffiti, oh, there you go. What a graffiti sounds like or, um, looks like.
Yeah, this might, uh, Chair Commissioner Abdi, this might be a little bit small text, um, but what I would, uh, I guess for the purposes of what the, the city code and the public policy considerations, it's not what it looks like, it's whether or not it has property owner consent.
Yeah.
So the city code defines graffiti as, uh, not having the consent of the property owner, done so in a way that the property owner did not consent to that. There is also a provision about, um, kind of deemed a public nuisance by the manager of environmental health, um, but from the, uh, nine time, 99 times out of 100, maybe not that high, but, uh, it's going to be the, the factor of not having property owner consent. It's not what it looks like in the traditional sense in your mind of, oh, that's beautiful art that is like in a style of graffiti or art, as graffiti as an art form. Yeah, don't think about that, think about the factor of not having property owner consent.
I think.
That's why it's differentiated.
No, I appreciate that. I think that was really, uh, helpful with it. Hopefully anybody watching this or future artists trying to go out, create art, um, go through the right process. Um, but also I think this definition of how you just described the distinction was really helpful. Um, yeah, I'll just leave it at that and maybe adding some pictures for us in the future.
Sure.
Thanks.
Any other feedback for staff? Commissioner Cookton?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm sorry to ask, but, um, I'm still a little hung up on the 100% thing. I was just curious if any commissioners had any other thoughts on that? They don't have to, but just asking.
I would say, given what we heard about the general coatings restriction, I would be more in favor of a crawl, walk, run approach to this mural issue. So, um, I, I would be okay with the 50 as a, as a starting point, but maybe that, we may find that that's too restrictive, but, um, without wanting to open the floodgates on everything right now, I would, I would lean toward following staff on that one personally.
Hello, Commissioners, Nick, I'm sorry, I just wanted to jump in and make sure I answer any questions Nick might have raised. This is Alejandra Palanca, I'm the Director of Creative Placemaking. Um, and I just, I tracked a couple of the questions, I just wasn't sure if the greatest time to pop in, but, um, in terms of, um, the application of, of, uh, the poly tab is what it's called technically, and we actually have it already installed at the Wrights Lake Park mural, facing Wrights Lake Park, Seasons of Becoming by Good Space Murals. They use the poly tab method, so that's going to be a good example in the future for us to look at what that application of, it's basically a high-tech canvas cloth that they adhere to the wall. Um, and in terms of the duration of murals, it really greatly varies in terms of the wall condition, the paint used, um, and the maintenance. And so that can vary anywhere from a couple of years to over 20 years or more. Um, so it, there's, you know, a lot of variability among that. Um, and then, yeah, I guess just in terms of the 100%, I certainly want to adhere and, and, um, respect planning commissions', um, concerns, but obviously being part of the creative community and understanding the large, really beneficial impact that allowing for an entire building to create a mural would be a really huge impact. Um, but that being said, I understand some of the concerns that are raised by, by staff and the Commissioners.
Thank you Chair. Can you vary the standards listed here? Can applicants say, even though the permit would be administrative, can you, because I don't know if the zoning code allows for, um, I guess that's not it?
Yeah, Chair Commissioner Abdi, know what, if, uh, whatever standards you adopt in the city code, those are the standards that staff would have to adhere to. Yep, to approve anything administratively.
Anything more? Commissioner Albrecht?
Uh, back to Commissioner Cookton's question regarding the limit to 50%, I have no opinion.
All right. I think, is there, did you get what you needed from us?
Yeah, yes, I mean, I, I, Chair Commissioners, I think I generally feel head nodding that, uh, we're on the right track or that this is a policy that, um, should be pursued and can be supported. So if that's the case, we'll bring it back to Creative Placemaking Commission and then we'll proceed to scheduling some public hearings.
Yeah, and again, I would, actually building on when Commissioner Abdi had some suggestions about what to do next time, it would, I think I would spend some time on, with something, whether it's in the pack or in the presentation about what happens when it's done and how do you make sure it's restored to something that was not worse than original.
Thanks for that feedback.
Yeah. Good, thank you. Item six is our routine policy and issue update. I'll start with the planning manager on that.
Chair, uh, Chair Roman, Commissioners, our next meeting would be July 13th. However, we had no applications for that meeting and given that nothing was continued to that meeting tonight, uh, we will be able to cancel July 13th. So then our next meeting after that, July 20th, uh, we just have one item, the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan on that agenda. Um, and then I also want to recognize Commissioner Abdi's, uh, last meeting as tonight and I want to thank her for three years of excellent service and a lot of insightful, uh, comments and questions. And we definitely hope that you apply again in the future if, if your schedule permits that. So thank you.
Stole my item. Um, no, but thank you very much for your time and your talents and sharing that and making the city a better place.
Thank you.
Any other items for the good of the order? All right, with that, we are adjourned until July 20th.